Everybody, and thank you for joining us at the special meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Monday, April 6, 2020. And this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph &amp; Brown Act. The City Council meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting in the following ways: via phone by dialing (669) 900-6833, and you would enter ID number 179651981, hashtag followed by star 9 on your phone to speak, and I'll be reminding you of that as the meeting progresses. Once again, that number to dial is (669) 900-6833. Enter ID 179651981. The pound sign followed by star 9 on your phone to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@modera.gov. Our recent agenda was updated to provide this information. With that, I will ask Alicia for roll call, please.
Mayor Madellin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Montes?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Holly?
Present.
Thank you so much, Alicia. Before we move on, I believe with that test of the microphones, Councilman Garcia, Councilwoman Gallegos was a little faint, and also Councilman Rodriguez. I'm not sure if you can hear that adjustment as we move forward so that everybody can hear you. And with that, if you're able to stand with us, it would be greatly appreciated for the invitation, which will be led by Councilman Holly, and then immediately after will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Holly, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Most our gracious Father, we come to say thank you for this day. We thank you for this technology. We thank you for our city. Oh, we know that this virus has got most of us its own. If you ask me, yes, continue bless our cities. That's the well-being of our city and our nation. For this, Father, we give you all praises and glory. In Jesus Christ's name, we say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Now, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the public.
To the public for which we stand.
One nation.
Under God. Their little liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Any council member wishing to add or change the existing agenda as presented? Seeing none? A call for approval of the agenda.
So move to approve. Second.
It's been properly moved by Councilman Holly and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving into public comment, as I mentioned, you will be recognized here shortly. If you wish to speak, you would press star 9 on your phone. And between myself and Mr. Sodders and IT, we will make sure that everybody, to the best of our ability, will be heard. Members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the City Council regarding matters on this agenda, and speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. With that, Mr. Sodders, I will ask if we have anyone wishing to speak. Looks like we have.
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. This is, I would recommend that perhaps you have a public comment after the staff presentation and my report, just so members of the public can comment after that. This is not the generic public comment. This is public comment on the action item.
I'm sorry, your microphone was a little haywire in the very beginning. Can you say that first part again?
I would recommend that you have a public comment after the staff reports. Delightions.
I think.
She was saying this is not the public comment part of a regular meeting. Just on the items.
Okay, so these two speakers are for the item before us. So with that, I will ask Alicia if we have any.
It's fine, but generally, it's done after the staff reports.
Of course. So what I'm opening up to you right now is just general public comment, correct? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
There is no general public comment in special meetings.
Okay.
That's.
So we will, okay, so we'll open the item, and then we'll just take comment after that item is open. I understand what you're saying. So that means we will move into item A1. Thank you very much. Item A1 is consideration of an urgency ordinance prohibiting residential and commercial tenant evictions related to the COVID-19 pandemic, beginning March 4, 2020, and continuing through May 31 of 2020, in accordance with the Governor Newsom's Executive Order N-2820, or as maybe extended by the Executive Order of the Governor or by state law. Mr. Rodriguez, if you would, take it from here, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Prior to commencing, I believe our City Attorney Hilda had a statement she would like to make.
Very briefly, thank you. There were a couple of questions raised as to whether members of the City Council who are renters or landlords have a conflict of interest in this matter. And there is a very specific FPPC regulation that addresses this and would allow, if you wish to participate, if you're a landlord or a renter, it would allow you to participate. It is in Regulation 18703 E4 Rental Properties. There's an exception. If the decision affects all renters of residential properties within the official jurisdiction and only interests resulting from the official's leasehold interest in his or her residence are affected. And second, there's one for states of emergency. The decision is made pursuant to an official proclamation of a state of emergency when required to mitigate against the effects directly arising out of the emergency, and there is no unique effect on the official's interest. So based on that, my opinion is that anyone who falls in those categories and wishes to proceed may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hilda. So with that, I'm going to share my screen with the council this evening and the community members that are watching. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
So. So the item before you this evening is it's consideration of an urgency ordinance prohibiting residential evictions related to COVID-19. Very briefly, as the council is very well aware, COVID-19 was discovered in China in the middle of December. It typically takes roughly two to 14 days for symptoms to appear. With that being said, more locally, so far in Madera County, we have 30 confirmed cases of COVID-19. That's those of about two hours ago. Unfortunately, we do have two deceased members of our community via COVID-19. We have eight individuals who've recovered that tested positive. We have 20 active community members. We have 100 members of our community that are currently being monitored. And to date, we've had 503 members in Madera County that have been monitored. But again, currently, there's 100 members, and we only have 20 confirmed active cases here in Madera County. So to date, the city has taken a plethora of actions. We went over those last Wednesday, which was April 1st. If any community members would like to gain a better understanding of some of the measures that we've taken here locally to help minimize the potential for the transmission of coronavirus, I would recommend that someone take a look at that. And then the other thing is that we are active on social media, both on the cities and on the Madera Police Department, in case anyone has any question. And just as a reminder for both the council and the community, this upcoming weekend, we are expecting very nice weather. It is Easter weekend. However, we are strongly encouraging people to celebrate at home and to not visit our community parks. We will be closing city parks beginning Friday, and they will be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They will be reopened Monday. And the main reason for that is Easter weekend is it's the day that we experience the most visitors to our parks. But however, in order to encourage physical distancing, we are going to be closing the parks, just in abundance of caution. So in terms of some state and some national efforts that have taken place back on March 14, or I'm sorry, March 4, so a little bit more than a month ago, the Governor, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency here in the state of California. Couple of weeks later, on March 16, the County of Madera issued a declaration of emergency. On that same day, then the Governor created an ordinance to halt evictions for residential and commercial renters. On March 18, the City of Madera issued an emergency declaration. Fast forward a couple of days, and the Governor on March 19 announced a statewide stay-at-home order. And then about a week later, on March 27, the Governor issued an Executive Order N-3720 that extended the period for a residential tenant who was served with an eviction summons to respond within 60 days. Couple of days after that, which was last Wednesday, the City Council scheduled a special meeting for this evening to discuss the eviction for both commercial and residential tenants here, specific to the city of Madera. So a couple of the challenges with the shelter in place. I'm not here to say it's not a good idea, to be candid. You know, truly, one of the reasons that Madera does, I mean, Madera, the state of California does not have a tremendous number of cases in comparison to other places is because the Governor was swift. He took action very rapidly, and he issued the stay-at-home order, so the shelter-in-place order. Couple of the challenges that have come up with that, these weren't expected. These were not anticipated. Again, everything that's been happening, it's moving relatively quickly, and there's a lot of moving parts, and the situation is fluid. It does preclude many residents of the city from working. In some other cases, it has significantly reduced the hours that may be worked from employees. It requires some residents to refrain from working altogether. And at the same time, it also requires some residents to work fewer hours to take care of their children because schools are currently closed. So with that being said, some people are going to struggle a little bit or a lot financially because, again, some places are closed altogether. There have been some people that have been furloughed. Some people have been laid off. Those layoffs could be temporarily, they could be permanent. With all that being said, there's a lot of unknowns for a lot of community members, and a lot of people are going to be struggling here financially. I would say even more so than they have been as the COVID-19 situation evolves. So the proposed ordinance, this is what staff is proposing this evening, it would have a retro date to March 4, so a little bit over a month ago, and it indicates a landlord shall not evict a resident or commercial tenant for non-payment if the tenant demonstrates that the tenant is unable to pay rent due to financial impacts related to COVID-19. And that's outlined in the staff report. So a landlord who knows any tenant cannot pay some or all of the rent temporarily shall not serve a notice pursuant follow or prosecute an unlawful detainer based on a three-day pay-or-quit notice. And so the ordinance further stipulates that before the date that the rent is due or within a reasonable period of time not to exceed seven days, the tenant shall notify the landlord in writing that the tenant needs additional time to pay. So again, so tenants would have seven days to notify the property owner that they do need additional time to pay. And in terms of what constitutes them notifying them, our City Attorney identified that it can be writing, it can be via communication, via text. So in any form that a tenant would typically communicate with their landlord or property owner. So a couple, so some of the financial impacts that are outlined in the ordinance. It's one, if a person can show their landlord that they're being financially impacted because they're either suspected of having COVID-19, they have a confirmed case of COVID-19, or they're caring for a household or a family member who's sick with either confirmed or suspected COVID-19. If they've been laid off, or they've experienced a reduction in hours or other income resulting directly from COVID-19. If they're in compliance with a recommendation or from a government health authority to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others. So for example, there are some cases, and Public Health Director Sarah Boss went over this last week. What's the difference between isolation versus quarantine? So can this would cover either case? If it's in compliance with local, state, or federal orders to shelter in place, to reduce business hours, to close businesses, or to change the manner of operating businesses. So again, we do have a lot of property owners. We have a lot of business owners in our community that they have to limit their hours because of the Governor's orders. If they've also experienced a substantial out-of-pocket in terms of medical expenses. So right now, last week, I'd read that the President has indicated that they are going to be paying hospitals back for any COVID-19-related items. With that being said, there are probably some individuals that are sick that they probably still have to pay them, at least in the meantime, for the fear of going to collections or doctor's visits or medical expenses that come up, which we all know can be extremely costly. And then also, another financial impact is childcare needs arising from school closures. So there are some community members that continue to work. However, they do have the added cost of daycare that they may not have otherwise experienced should the schools have remained open. In terms of collection of back rent, this is one key item that I think is really worth emphasizing. It's, can this proposed ordinance does not waive the rent? So if you're a residential tenant or commercial tenant, you still have to pay your property owner, your landlord. This does not waive anything. Rather, what it does is it provides tenants an additional six months to pay rent. So again, it does not waive it. This is not, okay, well, the city of Madera is going to pay it for me. The city is not proposing that the city pay it, and we cannot legally waive it. So again, I really want to emphasize this point. If you're a renter, either commercial or tenant, and you're going to ask for deferment, it's simply that, to deferment, it doesn't get you out of paying rent. It simply states that you have up to six months to pay it. And in terms of the six months, that's from the expiration date of the local emergency. So if this carries on for a couple of months, and the Governor extends it, and then it would be extended right now. The Governor has indicated that the emergency we have right now is sunset on May 31. So again, the Governor could extend that. I'm not too sure where that's going to happen, but as of right now, it would be six months from May 31, to again, not to waive it, but to pay the back rent. The applicable time period, I discussed this very briefly a few minutes ago. So it would be retroactive to March 4, so roughly a month ago, again, through May 31, unless, of course, the Governor extends the Executive Order or there's a state law, either by the Senate or by the Assembly here in the state of California, further extending that timeline. Now, when I said earlier that the situation is fluid, a couple of hours ago, the California Judicial Council, and Hilda will probably speak to this a little bit more, or she can elaborate. They made a ruling earlier today. As councils aware, your staff report with the draft ordinance was delivered yesterday, and there was a new ruling today. So again, so the situation is very fluid. So the Judicial Council today ruled that, which would provide additional delay or unlawful detainer hearings in court. The court ruled that. So the new rule will apply until 90 days after the Governor lifts the state emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic. So the Governor's order currently sunsets on May 31. So the judicial court indicated that that the courts would not hear cases for 90 days until after that. And then it requires any trial. So it also requires any trial in any eviction case that was already scheduled as of April to be postponed until at least 60 days after the initial trial date. So what it does is if there was existing trials already scheduled, it extends them 60 days from the scheduled date. So if it was today, as soon as it would be heard, it would be 60 days from today. So that would put us in, if I do my math right, that would be June 6. And again, that's assuming that the Governor's order is not extended, which, again, it's scheduled to sunset on May 31. So again, there are still some moving parts to this, and it seems like as the days progress, there are different rulings. But with all that being said, we do have a proposed urgency ordinance before the council this evening. And again, what that would do is that that would extend the amount of time that tenants, both residential and commercial tenants, have an opportunity to pay their property owners or their landlords up to six months after the sunset of the urgency ordinance as passed by the Governor. So with all that being said, California Government Code Section 36937 requires an urgency ordinance to be passed by four-fifths of the City Council. In the city of Madera, we have seven council members. So that does state that we have to have six yes votes or six individuals of the council to vote yes on this ordinance. If not, the ordinance would not, it would fail. If it is passed, the ordinance would become effective immediately. So if the council does take action on the ordinance tonight, it goes into effect tonight. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Hill. Then I believe Hilda had something to add.
Thank you, Arnaldo.
Thank you.
I will proceed now. Thank you, Arnaldo. Your city manager gave a very detailed report. This goes back to last Wednesday night when you were in a meeting, and you, as a City Council Director, that my office prepare an ordinance to address this matter that's before you, and also to provide some legal guidance. So on Saturday, at around 1:00 PM, I sent over to Arnaldo the ordinance as well as a detailed memo outlining the authority that the council has in this matter. And it's before you, and I'm not going to get, I'm not going to read it, but if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer any of the questions that you might have. I do want to outline a couple of things. Basically, this goes back, and it changed as of this afternoon a bit because of the Judicial Council. But basically, the two orders that were described in the memo are N-2820 and N-3720. And they both concern the deferral of the payment of rent because of the inability to pay due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's the basis for the two orders. And they're both effective through May 31, unless extended by the mayor, as noted by Arnaldo. One key difference that's noted in the memo is that the first order, the one that authorizes cities to enact ordinances, applies to both commercial and residential properties, whereas a second one only applies to residential. So that's one key difference that will be explained. And the memo gets into a lot of discussion as far as the differences and what can be done, and how the two orders can be reconciled. And as the manager described, the whole thing, everything about this pandemic, whether it's health, whether it's the economy, whether it's education, whether it's today, evictions, it's fluid, and it keeps changing. So I am going to just summarize for members of the public. You had the benefit of the memo, and it was posted, but I don't know if everybody got to read it. But I did want to just share the bullet points of the order. And a lot of it is mirrored in the ordinance. First of all, the first order, the one that gives the city authority to enact an ordinance, removes the statutory restrictions on a city to enact procedures concerning evictions. And so, and they relate to commercial and residential. And the order cannot extend to a moratorium on all evictions. The moratorium can only address the inability to pay due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's the only reason that the city. That's the only reason that that the city can enact an ordinance. And as the mentioned by your city manager, the tenants are still obligated to pay the rent. This is a deferral. Again, May thirty first is the the deadline. The other. The other order is. A little narrower in many respects. In that in the second order. Only applies again mainly the ma- the main thing is that it applies only to residential. And it halts the. The responses that are due when somebody is sued for a lawful detainer. It halts them during the time period for the. Until May thirty one. And so. The the big, big difference is that in thirty seven, twenty, the second order. Very specific noticing requirements are required for tenants to provide for the landlords. And those are outlined in the. In the ordinance and they were summarized by the city manager and we can go over them again if you wish. So. So what happened this afternoon is. That the California Judicial Council, which is basically the arm that runs the judicial system in the state of California for all the courts. And they are clogged, they are congested. There's lots of due process issues. They have many, many issues to deal with. And today they considered. An additional emergency order. And basically. A big, big difference in what's been done by the governor. First of all, the order suspends the entry of default judgments in all eviction cases. Whether based on misrent or another reason. So it is much broader. Two, it suspends the issuance of a summons in all again, in all eviction cases, whether based on misrent or other reasons. And another thing that that I did address in the memo was that the executive orders did not authorize cities to enact an ordinance to. Suspend or restrict foreclosures. Well, this afternoon's order does. Suspend judicial foreclosures on mortgages and deeds of trust and extends all deadlines for tho- for those kinds of foreclosures. So it's quite broad and this just happened this afternoon. It was a twenty eight page order. Not all of it has to do with evictions. It has to do with many other things that the courts have to deal with. But I did obviously go to all the sections that address the evictions. And I wanted to read a little bit about. Language that's in the orders. I think it's important because it kind of goes to the heart of what you are thinking of doing. And and that is the seriousness of the situation. The. The situation that the tenants find themselves in. And so the courts have are doing something. Broader. So basically, it says. It's talking about all the problems with the pandemic. And it says, in addition, the number of such actions for both commercial and residential properties. Is likely to explode in coming months as a significant portion of the population. Faces severe economic losses due to the closing of businesses. Loss of income and inability to work due to illness or the need for childcare in light of stay at home orders. Resulting in a surge of unlawful detainer filings and trials in the courts. So that's where they're coming from. They're call- they're coming from the. The surge in the in the courts, the congestion in the courts. And then they reference the governor's executive orders that we've talked about. Says the governor's executive order is intended to help address this crisis. By providing an extended answer period to and banning the enforcement of evictions for residential tenants. Who have suffered COVID nineteen pandemic related income loss and meet certain other requirements. That order, however, cannot by itself provide sufficient assistance to tenants and to the courts to avert this crisis. Proposed emergency rule one would amend current court procedures throughout the pandemic. To implement the goals of the executive order as well as protect litigants in court. And court staff. So that's the basis for for this new judicial council order. It is quite broad. So. That's pretty much my summary. I can answer any questions now, or you may want to hear from members of the public first, which is what I would recommend that we hear. But all the members of the public might want to say on this subject. And then we can bring it back and I can answer questions that you or members of the public may raise concerning this matter. And as the manager said, this ordinance, if you adopt it today, requires six votes. And if you adopted today, would go into effect immediately.
Thank you, Hilda. I appreciate that. And just to clarify something you said in the very, very beginning. This this the governor's orders is through May thirty first. You said unless unless extended by the mayor, and I think what you.
You you were the only one who to heard that, right? By the governor, that is correct.
Take a few others. I just wanted to clarify that before we moved any any further. But you're absolutely right. Normally, what I would do at this point after a report is I would ask if there's any members of council. But I do want to recognize we have four written emails for this particular item. And I believe we have two callers on hold. So I do want to get to everybody. I appreciate your patience. We will do that. And then we'll bring them back to council. So with that, I'm going to ask Alicia. If you would first read the the emails that were submitted on this particular item.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is received by Jasmine Rueda. As a Madera citizen, I don't think the city is doing enough to support the community during this pandemic. We are not supporting our small businesses. We are not supporting our homeowners or our tenants. Pass the urgency ordinance. It's the right thing to do. Promote a sense of unity in our community. The second email I received is from the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. This is a letter to the council and city manager. Dear Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. I'm writing to provide you with brief feedback regarding the urgency ordinance that is before city council in light of COVID nineteen state of emergency. And to urge you to pass this ordinance with several modifications tonight. First, however, on behalf of tenants of the city of Madera who have contacted us to express their fears of eviction. For inability to pay rent this month due to COVID nineteen related loss of income. We commend the mayor, city council, city manager and city attorney for their efforts in calling a special meeting. And preparing an ordinance on such short notice to address this unprecedented. Crisis as a next step, we ask you to vote in favor of this ordinance and pass it with two modifications. Listed below to protect Maderans from homelessness and from exposure to COVID nineteen. In order to make this ordinance as clear and effective as possible, we recommend and respectfully request the following edits. Number one, add the following language from a similar ordinance passed in the city of Coachella to section three B. Any documentation that is provided to support this claim is presumed to be adequate for this purpose. And the burden is on the landlord to prove that it is inadequate. We propose that the council adopt this modification to the ordinance in light of the fact that many city of Madera residents. Will be unable to provide formal documentation demonstrating their loss of income because of the nature of their unemployment. Example, workers in the informal economy who do not receive pay stubs or are paid in cash. Because they lack a bank account or because they do not have access to equipment necessary to prepare formal documentation for the landlord, such as a personal computer. Or a printer and locations with such with such equipment may be inaccessible due to shelter in place orders. This modification would ensure that tenants can benefit from the protection of this ordinance who cannot pay rent due to the reasons relating to COVID nineteen. Number two, amend the following sentence from section three B to read. A landlord knows of a tenant's inability to pay rent within the meaning of this ordinance if the tenant within thirty days after the date that the rent is due. Notifies a landlord in writing that the tenant needs to delay all or some payment of rent due to lost income. And inability to pay due to financial impacts related to COVID nineteen. And provides documentation to support the inability to pay rent claim. Upon adoption of this ordinance, most tenants in Madera will be unaware of the ordinance's requirements that take effect. Specific actions in order to benefit from protections under the ordinance. A thirty day timeframe provides a more realistic opportunity for tenants to learn about and act in accordance with the ordinance's notice. And documentation requirements so that tenants are not inadvertently and tragically excluded from protection under the ordinance. If these order, if these edits are accepted, section three B of the urgency ordinance would be amended to read. A landlord who knows what a tenant cannot pay some or all of the rent temporarily for the reasons set forth in this ordinance shall not serve a notice pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure Section. Eleven sixty one, two. File or prosecute an unlawful detainer action based on a three day pay or quit notice or otherwise seek to evict a tenant for non-payment of rent. A landlord knows of a tenant's inability to pay rent within the meaning of this ordinance if the tenant within thirty days after the date that rent is due. Notifies a landlord in writing that the tenant needs to delay all or some payment of rent due to lost income. And inability to pay due to financial impacts related to COVID nineteen. And provides documentation to support the inability to pay rent claim. Any documentation that is provided to support this claim is presumed to be adequate for this purpose and the burden is on the landlord to prove that it is inadequate. Thank you again for your leadership in addressing the COVID nineteen crisis. Proactively by convening teleconference meetings with the opportunity for public comment. And by adapting to the constantly changing information regarding this virus through special meetings and urgency ordinances as needed. Lastly, you may be aware of the California Judicial Council passed a rule today, which would provide an additional delay to unlawful detainer hearings in court. Though it delays eviction evictions, this new rule does not provide a defense to tenants unable to pay rent now due to COVID nineteen related loss of income. This is why the ordinance before city council tonight is still very needed. For this reason, we strongly urge you on behalf of the Madera residents we work with to vote in favor of and pass this urgency ordinance with two modifications. Proposed in this letter above. We believe that passing this ordinance is the right thing to do, but beyond that, we believe that the following. We believe that following the many jurisdictions statewide who have passed similar ordinances will contribute to better public health outcomes in the city of Madera. And across the region by keeping people in their homes and flattening the curve. Do not hesitate to reach out should you have any questions regarding our comments. And thank you again for your leadership in confronting these unprecedented times. Of global pandemic with courageous adaptive action on behalf of your constituents. Gratefully, Madison Harris, policy advocate. The third is from Mr. Mike Pistresi. Dear Arnoldo and council members. To even consider an ordinance reiterating Governor Newsom's executive order N dash two, eight, dash two, zero. Related to evictions is a waste of time and taxpayer money and appears to be a political stunt. That will have no effect on what was already been that what was already been banned by the governor, other than making you feel good. About it and potentially solidifying some votes come next election because you did the right thing. How about moving on to more pressing business like water rates, billing unfilled leadership positions. A lack of funding for animal shelter and our crumbling streets and infrastructure instead of plain politics. Sincerely, Michael Pistresi. And this one is from Mr. Baldwin Moy. Dear Mayor Madeline and council members of city council. California California rural legal assistance is a federally funded legal services that represent low income individuals and families in Madera County. Over seventy five percent of the cases we see are landlord tenant cases involving involving eviction defense. As you are no doubt aware, shortage of housing and low wages are a lethal combination of causing many families to overpay for rent. Put up with substandard conditions, end up losing their housing and becoming homeless. The COVID nineteen pandemic has exasperated these intolerable conditions for those that represent the most vulnerable in our community. For all the additional reasons set forth in the staff report, we respectfully urge the council to sign this ordinance into law. To head off a major threat to the health, safety and stability of the city of Madera. This ordinance, when adopted, along with California judicial judicial councils just adopted court rule will help families to weather these troubled times. And transition back to order and normalcy. While it can be further strengthened, it is a step in the right direction. In closing, we are requesting that a provision be added to the ordinance requiring the council to revisit the need to continue this ordinance in force. And affect for for a further time period if warranted. Thank you for your kind courtesy and consideration of the points raised. Baldwin Moy.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Those were the four, right? There's not, there's not anymore at this point?
No. That's that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. We do have a couple other participants on the line. I am now going to recognize our first speaker. Bear with me. This is the first time we've done this, so let's hope it works. Speaker, are you with us?
Hi, I was just notified that I was unmuted. So I hope that I am correct in speaking right now. But this is Madeline Harris from Leadership Council. And I didn't know that my written comments would be read aloud. So I'll try to keep this brief so as to not take up more time in public comment. But I just wanted to. Urge city council to adopt this urgency ordinance this evening. As some of you know, I've been receiving calls from tenants who are scared. About their inability to pay right now due to COVID nineteen related loss of income. And feel that this urgency ordinance would provide some much needed defense against eviction to them right now. And certainly want some of these newer state rules expire. So we definitely urge you to vote in favor. And we also submitted that letter with those minor edits that we suggested because we feel that would help make this ordinance as. Clear and as effective and as accessible as possible for all Madera residents. So thanks again for your leadership on this. And again, urge you to to vote in favor. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Harris. And I see we have a second speaker, Mark. I don't see the hand raised is is.
Let's go ahead and allow them to talk.
Speaker, are you with us? Is anyone there? We can keep an eye on that, right, Mark? Once you call in. In order to speak, if you hit star nine, we will recognize you that you are wishing to speak. So I'm not sure, Mark, if we can put this caller back in the attendees list or hopefully they maybe call back. At this time, what I'd like to do is for those that are watching. If you'd like to call in and be part of the discussion regarding this item, the phone number is six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. Enter ID number one, seven, nine, six, five, one, nine, eight, one pound. And again, if you wish to speak on your phone, if you hit star nine, you will be recognized to speak. That being said, I don't see any other speakers on the phone, so I'll bring it back to council for any questions of Mr. Rodriguez or Ms. Montoy regarding this emergency ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Holly.
Listening to this, I like everything I hear. You know, a lot of the city could be curtailed if we just. Stop amending things and just. I would like to see sort of a tenant have to bring something back. From landlord or a landlord, try to get in touch with a tenant. Stick with the six months. Regardless of the situation, they have six months from May thirty first in order just to pay whatever they might owe. Instead of trying to amend this for. The workers to go out and try to get a letter from their their boss or the boss trying to find. The applicant to write many letters that he might have to write. The easiest way to do that, if they're behind in their rent and they're getting supplements to order to pay. Just go ahead and give them that six month period in order to pay their rent.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. And I and I think to the point of the. The Leadership Council, I think that's what they were trying to say in in that. Any documentation that's provided to support this claim is presumed to be adequate. Now, there will be some sort of documentation or information or something provided to the the landlord. I'm not sure exactly if you're saying no, no information whatsoever.
Yes.
Okay.
Because all he's going to do is he's going to want to agree with her. He might not agree with it. And if we just stick it to the six months for. And if we just stick it to the six months for them to pay them back, then that should be subsidized to what he's got coming. And that will stand in concrete.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Councilman, basically it's, it's. Regardless of any kind of uh, uh, written information. Or something that, that shows that you have a financial hardship, that just if you're a renter. Um, commercial or otherwise. Just adhere to the, to these, these rules or provisions without any kind of written support. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Gallegos?
I have a question. Um, if we were to put this ordinance in place and we're saying that uh, our residents can't have a six months to pay it back. What if they don't pay it back in six months? If we're putting that ordinance in, in effect, how does that affect us if they don't pay it back within that period?
Mayor, do you want me to start responding to questions as they arise or, or take them all or?
No, I think uh, if you would answer the, the last one or actually both of them.
Okay, well, on this one, it, I mean, if they don't pay, they could then be evicted for non-payment of rent. Uh, but it would, the, the city would not have any responsibility or liability for something like that. Um, going back to the prior comments uh, by Mr. Holly. Certainly that would be uh, something that would be helpful for to tenants, Mr. Holly and council. However, the, if, if, if you were able to read the memo. Uh, and as I noted earlier, all the language that's in the ordinance concerning notice. It's almost identical, it's almost verbatim uh, to the language in executive order. And thirty seven dash twenty by the governor where he said, this is a kind of notice that must be provided. So I did not come up with those kinds of requirements for notice. Your city manager did not come up with those requirements. Those requirements are in the government's executive order thirty seven dash twenty. It, it, in, interestingly however, uh, the, the judicial council rules, which are separate. But that, that are, that came down today, interestingly those uh, do not require. Uh, everything's just suspended regardless. It doesn't have to do with uh, non-payment of rent or payment of rent or anything. It can be for any reason. They're just halting uh, the evictions for that length of time. But under this ordinance, if you want to enact an ordinance, uh, it is recommended that the ordinance be consistent with your authority. And your authority would uh, must be consistent with the executive order noticing requirements.
Can you just, um, just a quick point of clarification, going back to Councilwoman Gallegos's question. I think her question and, and please stop me if I'm incorrect, Councilwoman Gallegos. What recourse do property owners have if someone doesn't pay rent for six months, correct Councilwoman Gallegos? Is that where you were going?
Correct, cuz like if we're putting in this ordinance in place and giving that six months leeway. Instead of them evicting in three months when everything goes back, they're losing now six months of rent. Because they need to be back to put that in place.
That would be a potential uh, then the, the, because it's, it's a longer period. Than what landlords are generally given for going, for trying to recoup their, their rent.
Right.
So they're, 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 they ultimately could lose that amount of rent. That's correct.
If I may ask.
And that is something that you could also reduce. You could say, well, we wanna be fair to both sides. Maybe we reduce the time period for, for that.
Okay.
Hilda, question.
Yes.
That's only concerning to pay back the amount. They still have to start their rent. After the si, after the sixty day period, like say for June first, they will have to start paying their rent, right?
Right, but.
The, the sixth month is only for the two or three months that they didn't pay.
Right, that is correct.
Okay, that's what I was saying. If that's the case, then. The order of, he still is gonna start receiving which what he's after word by collecting is the two months that they didn't pay rent. So that would give them that sixty months, I mean, that six month period to pay back that two months of rent that he lost.
That's correct. The only thing is now, again, we, we have this new, new hot potato. And, and in many ways, it's very good. And in many ways, it raises other issues. And that is the, the judicial council rules that say that everything's halted. Or probably five, that period of time anyway, the five months at least.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman and Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Montez.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to see, um, I know things are changing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know things are changing, but I have a question for Hilda. She has her crystal ball. If she can see, if she can anticipate any, any other changes, um, because what, it sounds like what we're talking about here. Um, we're pretty much in line with what the, with the, the state is saying, the governor and the judicial council. Uh, as far as people aren't gonna be getting evicted, what we're saying is they're just gonna have more time to pay it back. Um, do you see anything changing? I know it's kind of hard to speculate. But I mean, if you replace yourself in their shoes, what would you see would that could benefit the, the residents beyond what has already?
I think what, I, I anticipate that the governor will be extending the order beyond May thirty one. But on the other hand, he may say, well, I may not need to anymore. Because uh, uh, now we have the judicial council extending it for that period of time, so. So my answer might have been different yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
And, and could be different tomorrow.
Correct.
Understood. Any other questions from council? I, I, yes, Mayor Protem Garcia.
I do have the indicator for hand raised. I don't know if you can see it.
Oh, I do now. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. Just wanna, this new tech, technology that we're all dealing with and. Doing a great job, by the way. Um, Hilda and Arnoldo, thank you very much for, for your work on this. I know that we were asking the impossible of you to try to get this done from last Wednesday when we had our, our meeting. Today, and I appreciate that you did as much as you did. Um, so unfortunately, I didn't know anything about this judicial ruling that was uh, done today. I, I think one of the things that it addresses that you stated, and correct me if I'm wrong. It uh, also addresses closure. So for homeowners who were not under the governor's, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, in the last rulings, the governor was not addressing homeowners who were paying their mortgage.
Correct.
And this one does.
Yes, the judicial council uh, orders that came out today suspends all judicial foreclosures.
So we have as the city council, the ability to address that also now?
No, no, you, you still only have the authority under the executive orders. And the executive orders did not include foreclosures. They, I think where some people got a little mixed up is that the for, the executive order talked about. Uh, evictions resulting from foreclosures, but did not address foreclosures directly. But that is something new that people didn't have this morning as far as the foreclosure remedy.
So then I support this ordinance that we're, that we have before us today. And thank you very much for the hard work that you put in to get it done in a wording. Um, uh, my only concern I think would be to mirror, uh, how do we deal with the documentation? That people are gonna present um, in order to justify. I believe that they should present some documentation, even if it's the minimal thing like a, in the form of a letter. Saying, I am being affected by the cor, uh, the virus and these are the reasons why I'm asking for, for help. And so then uh, a, a, a business who has folks that are asking for relief. Needs to have some type of documentation. Who believe that a lot of our residents in Madera specifically have trouble uh, with their educational levels. The ability to be able to provide documents in an acceptable form that might be over burdensome for them. They're already dealing with, like my, I, I have a couple of friends, both of them, the husband and, and the wife lost their jobs. And now they're looking at how are we, how are we gonna pay? We don't have jobs. And everyone else is looking for jobs and they're really stressing out about how they're gonna deal with this. So on, added on top of that, they're gonna have to justify. So I would like to see a minimum amount of documentation, but some documentation that they can provide. Um, and it's not just carte blanche or, or like they're gonna be able to get off on nothing. Need to remember, I, I believe that this is not a waiver of. They are responsible for paying at the end of the day, whether it's one month, two months, three months, they're obligated to pay. And, and, and so we just may, need to make sure that the folks that are, are listening to us and are gonna re, uh, read our, our ordinance. Understand that we're not giving anybody a waiver. So I think we could tweak that part about the documentation, but other than that, I think this ordinance suffices for what we need to do.
And, and again, I can, I can understand that. Uh, I used to be a legal aid lawyer myself. So I definitely understand which, where you're coming from. Uh, my concern, uh, if, if you, we were to amend the ordinance on the noticing. Would be that it would be inconsistent with the executive order and a landlord could use that. And we would, we might be giving the wrong message. For example, if we just said a simple letter and the tenants all submit simple letters. And then the court, the landlord's in court and saying, look, the executive order was very clear. They did not follow the executive order language, so they should not get the benefit of the doubt. Um, earlier you asked me what, somebody asked me what, what do I think might happen? I think that, that courts are gonna be very reasonable and, under the circumstances. But, but I think I would prefer that the court be the one to, to say, to have uh. Uh, the advocates advocating for the tenants or the, the tenants saying this was reasonable. And presenting their case rather than us giving them something that may not be uh, valid. So I, I would recommend that we keep the, the noticing language uh, in, as, as required by the executive order.
I see that we have a caller, uh, that's called in. Hello caller, are you there? I see the number, although I don't see the indication to speak. Caller, are you, are you there? Are you with us?
Hi, hello. I don't know if that's my phone, but I did not mean to speak.
Okay, no, that's, that's, that's okay. That's okay.
Alright.
No, no problem at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, uh, Hilda, so based on this judicial challenge that was presented today. Uh, do you think that uh, taking on this ordinance is, is prudent? And um, or is it a little premature based on the changes that are happening on a, almost on a daily or weekly?
I think it's a policy call for, for the city council. Let me make sure, am I on? Yeah, uh, it's, it is a policy call for the city council. Uh, as, as far as, as that goes, as far as whether it's prudent or not prudent. I think the only, uh, I think it is broader in many ways. Because it's, it doesn't just have to be about not paying your rent. It can be for any reason. The, I think the courts don't wanna be involved with all the details and they're just saying, we're just halting everything. And so, 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 so in that sense, maybe somebody could argue that it's not necessary. Uh, in the event some, I, I, I see a very narrow, I guess, opportunity for, for tenants and their advocates. With, with the uh, ordinance and that is in presenting a defense that the uh, that they didn't pay. Because of COVID nineteen and they didn't pay because of the ordinance. But uh, because all the other, or all the other reasons, if, if people are. Not evicted under the CJC, under the judicial council order, they still may, may get evicted. Because they don't have defenses, whereas here there would be that defense of not paying because of these ordinance, but it is very limited.
Thank you, Hilda.
Very, very good questions, everybody. Thank you very much. And I think what's important to remember here is that these are unprecedented times. This is something brand new that the city is going through. And as uh, uh, Mr. Rodriguez stated in the beginning of his presentation, we've, we've taken quite a few measures already. Um, in, in this very, very difficult time. And to me, what this measure does is offer support and hope in a lifeline. For half of the residents in our city, which are renters. Also acknowledging that the other side of the coin are the landlords or the home education component. As we answer questions and show that support, but the support does need to go both ways. And the, the governor's office, it, it's certainly gonna make, in my opinion. Amendments, additions and changes a, as the upcoming days, weeks or months happen. The unknown, I think, is the most difficult part of this. Uh, there was a time where our president had said, uh, we're gonna be shelter in place only through Easter. And there's others that are saying through the end of the year. And so as an employer, it's very, very difficult to know what the future holds. And any of us will agree that if we do not know when our next check is going to happen. That makes it very, very difficult. And that's why this emergency meeting was set in place is just to show that support for our residents, our renters. Uh, and at the same time, show, show support for the entire community, which does include our, our landlords. So I, I, I support the ordinance as it is presented. I had the same questions as it came to documentation, uh, Ms. Montoy and what constitutes adequate documentation. Um, but I, I, I feel that's something that should be worked out between the tenant and their landlord. I highly recommend if they have not done so already, that every tenant should be reaching out to their landlord. And, and, and going over the agreement or the contract and, and working out something. I wanna believe that most property owners and landlords are willing at this point to be supportive of these difficult times. But sooner rather than later. Uh, but again, I was concerned as to what constitutes adequate information. So I had those very same questions, but to your answer, Ms. Montoy, again, it seems. Pretty detailed and spelled out on, on what is adequate and what is not. I will ask if there's any other questions or concerns from council.
CNN will support the order. Again.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Councilman, that was a, that was a motion?
Yes, it was. Move me to accept the, the ordinance as presented.
And I'm sorry, the second was from who?
I sound Garcia.
It was so, uh, moved by Councilman Holly, properly moved by Councilman Holly and seconded by Mayor Protem Garcia. To approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
If I can ask the city clerk to do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
He's on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallegos?
No.
Councilmember Robinson?
I think we temporarily lost him.
Yeah, it appears that we lost him.
Where'd he go?
Let me try calling him. I'm getting him on the line. One moment.
Thank you.
He answered.
I have council member on speakerphone and council member Robinson. Will you please provide me with your vote of yes or no to the ordinance?
Yes.
Mayor Madeline?
Yes.
The final vote is six yes. One no, motion passes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. I appreciate that. If there's no further comment, it's not agendized for any council member report. So with that, I too would like to thank our city manager, Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Montoy. For your your hard work through the weekend and for all council members for your attendance and your discussion on this very important item. Thank you all very, very much and have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Holly.
I don't have a council member report, but I do like to thank the council for your prayers. My wife will be coming home tomorrow. She does not have to have an implant done for her heart, so just give you an update. Thank you all for prayers.
Prayers do work. That's fantastic. Great news, Councilman Holly. Thank you all very, very much. Everyone have a good evening.